It's seven o'clock and I am calling the meeting to order of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. It's Tuesday, February ninth and it's, like I said, 7:00 PM and we're holding this meeting through a virtual format of Zoom. So Candace, here we are. We'll start with roll call.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Kathy Cop.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Yeah.
Robin Klein is excused. Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda then is consideration of the consent calendar. There were council minutes from January 26th, payment of bills, the financial reports for January. There are no appointments to boards or commissions and we have Resolution 21-03, creating the task force for inclusivity, diversity and equity. Hi. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Jason to approve the consent calendar. Candace will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and now we're to the next item on the agenda, which is citizens' comments, observations and petitions. If anyone, so James, we'll start with you. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and during this comment section, we don't have a discussion or take action.
Okay.
Glad to hear from you.
Sounds good. Okay, so my name is James. This is my first time attending this meeting, so nice to meet you all. I'm going to the University of Wisconsin Platteville for electrical engineering and so I'm just right down here in the Dodge House apartments. But one of the, I guess you could call this a little petition thing I was thinking about. It's kind of in the theoretical stage. But I'm thinking that a kind of a little bit of a problem for a lot of people in the, like especially residents in the apartment buildings is that we don't have, we lack the ability to compost. And I feel like it would be like, we have, being on campus over, I was on campus like two years ago and they have a little system that's working. Like a truck comes like once every week or something like that to pick up compost materials and I think it's a good way to encourage students to compost. And I feel like expanding these services over to potentially all the apartment buildings across Platteville would be a kind of a unique proposition to, like just a unique thing to try. And I was born and raised up in Iron River, Wisconsin and you know, like it's easy to compost stuff when you're out in the woods. You just like throw it in a pile and then like throw it in your garden or whatever, but you can't just like toss banana peels out your window. Like when you're in an apartment building, but so yeah, that's kind of, kind of my thoughts right now. And I feel like for my, my personal solution to the problem would just probably just like have like a bin outside like every apartment building. And maybe like, maybe the town could pitch in like five, like get a five gallon bucket for like each resident or something like that. I don't know where the roles or responsibilities would rely between the town and like the landlord or whatnot. But I feel like that that would be taking a step in the right direction and that's kind of my thoughts on that. So thanks, thanks for listening.
Okay, thanks, James. And I saw, I could tell Adam, our city manager, Adam Wave, that's James, that's Adam, he's our city manager. I could see him writing something down. So I suspect that this will be a discussion with perhaps Adam and some of the staff. I do know we have a task force right now on recycling and waste and so maybe they'll discuss it too. Who knows? But thank you for sharing. Thank you for sharing. Okay, Ken, wherever you went.
Yes, what happened here? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we don't see you anymore, but.
Oh, that's good. What this is about is last Saturday, I received a call from a person that lives on Division Street. And this is a situation, what I found there was that from the church, First English Luther, that corner, Pine Street, down to the stop sign next to the filling station, the whole thing had been plowed by the city and they threw a lot of ice. It was ice when I saw it. They threw ice in on the sidewalks of the people there, of the renters and owners. And so my concern was that the lady was going to get a ticket by Sunday noon if she did not remove this ice from her sidewalk. Now she had had two people already working on her sidewalk previously and the city had dumped this stuff on her sidewalk. Now, what can be done so that people aren't faced with this sort of problem? No, the city caused a problem for her and now she was being asked to get rid of the ice which was coming from the city work. So that's, that's one for Howard. So I'd like to find out if everybody got a notice at that time to clean out their sidewalks and what happened to all those notices? Were they given citations? She hired somebody on Saturday afternoon to come in and clean, clean her sidewalk off as best as she could. So this is a problem that's occurred before. The city has to be more, I'll just simply call it compassion, compassionate as far as what's taking place here.
Okay, thanks, Ken, for sharing that. And again, I saw Adam writing and I saw Howard. Did I see Howard? I don't see Howard. I see Howard writing. So I'm sure that, I'm sure that they will get back to you.
I don't care about my picture, but what happened to it?
Yeah, I think you're talking to your family, right, Ken?
I got it back.
There we go. All right. So Ken, I saw Adam and Howard writing, so I'm sure that they'll get back to you and look into. And if anybody else has heard on the council from members of their ward or their area about similar circumstance, please share that with Adam and Howard.
Can I just interrupt real quick? Can we address a couple of comments that just came that were quite inappropriate? In the chat?
Well, yes, I guess we should. I didn't see those. Is that person still on?
Yes.
I have no idea. Okay.
He is not now.
Okay, Jody, you're controlling the, who gets in?
Working on it, yes. My apologies.
Okay.
Does that get recorded or no? Or can we remove that from the chat?
Part of the video.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you for catching that, Jason. I was listening and did not see that until you said that because I have my chat off. Okay, um, and Jody, be vigilant, okay? Okay, reports, has a, hack that were reports. We had board commissioning committee reports from the tourism committee, Jason?
Nothing to add.
Okay, and the redevelopment authority. Oops.
When, when are you going to have the 2021 action plan ready? Is that already done or are you working on it?
For the chamber, for the tourism?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that it's in progress right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I've been working with Wayne. I believe that'll actually come up as part of the, potentially the consent agenda at our next meeting, so.
Okay, redevelopment authority board, Eileen.
Nothing to add.
Okay, other reports that were in your committee were the water and sewer financial report for January, airport financial report for January and on any of those. People have been busy. All right. Then we'll move into the action portion of our agenda. The first action item is ordinance 20-03, correction to annexation legal description 275 Business Highway 151. Joe, do you take this one?
Yep, this will be me. So last January, January 2020, the council did approve an annexation of a portion of the Chamber of Commerce property. It's the, if you recall, was the Katie, Katie's Garden portion of their property. So that was approved last January when Grant County just recently was going through their updates to their municipal boundaries for their mapping service. As they were putting in that information, the meets and bounds description that was included in the ordinance, they realized that their, their, the boundary wouldn't close. So as they looked further, they realized that there were a couple of numbers that were transposed in the original ordinance instead of 104, or excuse me, instead of 462 feet, it was typed up as 426 feet. So obviously two numbers makes a big difference when it's in the wrong order. So they did go ahead and put in the information as it was supposed to be, but to make sure we adopt the amended ordinance with the correct legal description. Any questions?
Okay, folks, we put this on the, on the action item agenda, even though we didn't discuss it last month because we discussed it twice last year under information and then for action. And this is simply a transposition of two numbers from a 2.6 to a 6. So do I hear a motion?
I move.
I would move to approve ordinance 2003, correction to annexation legal description 225 West Business Highway 151.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and Kathy. I'm going to take Ken's second because he also tried to make a motion at the same time. All right, Candace will vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who seconded.
I can't.
Yeah.
Ken, thank you.
Level motion.
Got it. Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, action item B is ordinance 21-01, repealing and recreating Section 2.03 polling places within the city. And Candace, this is yours.
Yes. So in 2020, the city of Platteville was informed that the Armory was no longer going to be available to be used as a polling location. And with the completion of the Brasky Center, it was the decision to relocate our polling location from the Armory to the Brasky Center for the 2020 election, elections in August and November. Utilizing the Brasky Center as a polling location served the city of Platteville well during those elections. And we see, received positive response from the public. We would like to make the change to establish the Brasky Center as the polling place for wards 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8 and 9, which would be districts 1, 2 and 4. For future elections, a section 2.03 of the City of Platteville Municipal Code must be amended to reflect this change. And we would just be asking to have that approved.
Okay, any questions on this? Basically moving the people who used to vote at the Armory to now vote at the Brasky Center, which has happened in the last three elections, I think.
Two.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 2101, repealing and recreating Section 2.03 of the municipal code.
Second to the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy Cop and a second by Ken Killian to approve ordinance 2101. Candace will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next two items on the action agenda, I believe we'll take basically together. First, we have lot consolidation of lots 39 to 43 of Platteville's Industry Park. And second, we have the sale of city land, lots 39 to 43 in the Platteville Industry Park. And I think Joe will handle this, but before Joe goes, Patrick, welcome back. Patrick is with Skanel Properties. I believe we met him at the last council meeting. And Lawrence, Lawrence McCormick has joined us tonight. Lawrence is representing the business that will lease the property that is being built and developed by Skanel. So Patrick and Lawrence, and I don't, I see the other of your team members, although I do see Hila, our Plavalory Industrial Development Corporation Executive Director and Ron Brisboy from Grant County Economic Development on, with us tonight. So Joe, do you want to start?
Yes. Yeah, so as you mentioned, this is a request for two separate items, but they're obviously related. First is to consolidate five lots in the industry park into one lot. It's at the southwest corner of Vision Drive and East Side Road. The five lots together is just under 21 acres. And the, the request is to combine that into one lot to allow for the sale and redevelopment of that property. So the city and staff and Pedic has been working with Skanel, who would be the purchaser and developer of that property. Their desire is to construct a 342,000 square foot warehouse distribution, distribution facility would include some light manufacturing and some office space as well. So that would be built on that property for their client, which Lawrence can talk about that. As much as he would like to, I guess, this evening. So it's pretty straightforward request. Actually, the lot consolidation basically just results in removing the interior lot lines, turn it into one lot. So it is buildable. So we'd recommend approval of that with two conditions. The one that a formal certified survey map be created, and I know the engineers are working on that as we speak. And then the CSM should be recorded with Grant County. And then the, the sale also is actually pretty straightforward because the sale of land in the industry park is already kind of the, the process is outlined according to the industry park land price formula. So that dictates the price that is paid for the land. It's a base price of 67,500 per acre. And then that price can be reduced based on the, the value of the building or improvements that are made to the property, the number of jobs created, and then the pay for those jobs that are created. So theoretically, they can get the land for a dollar an acre. So staff would also recommend approval of the sale of the land that is resulting from the consolidation to Skanel properties following the land price formula and contingent upon the formal sale documents being drafted, which are also being worked on as we speak. Any questions for me?
Joey, did you mention this went to the plan commission?
I did not mention that. It actually went to the plan commission. They recommended approval of both. The Pedic board also reviewed it and recommended approval of the sale as well.
Okay, Patrick, do you have anything additional you want to say?
I do not this evening, Barb. I appreciate it and glad to be back. And I think the floor tonight is probably Lawrence's floor.
Well, and Lawrence, that sounds like a perfect intro for you. Would you like to say something tonight?
I would, and I will take all the mystery out of the project. And sorry about that, that we weren't quite ready to announce a couple of weeks ago. But I'm Lawrence McCormack and I'm the Director of State and Government Relations for Cummins. So as you can imagine, I'm here to discuss Cummins' role in this project. So first, I want to thank you, Council President Doss and members of the council for allowing me to speak tonight. Before I get into specifics of the project, I wanted just to give you a brief background on Cummins. So Cummins is a global power leader that designs, manufactures, distributes and services diesel, natural gas, hybrid, battery electric and hydrogen fuel cell power trains. And our products are used in a wide variety of heavy duty applications ranging from pickup trucks, school buses, transit buses, delivery vehicles, fire engines, semi trucks, construction equipment, agricultural machinery, locomotives and power generation equipment. And within that larger company, we, we operate five primary business units. So we have our engine business, components, power systems, distribution and new power. So we've operated in Wisconsin for decades and we employ around 1,300 people in the state. And so we have manufacturing and research and development facilities in Nielsville, in Stoughton, and then, as you're aware, just down the road in Mineral Point, in addition to several sales and service locations. So Mineral Point is part of our emission solutions business, which is manufactures the emissions components that are really vital to our products meeting the emission standards around the globe. And so with that, I want to just give a little brief background on the project itself. So we are working with Skanel Properties to develop a warehouse to support our Mineral Point plant in addition to our domestic, international and overseas OEM and service parts customers. And as the team from Skanel presented at the council meeting on the 26th, and Joe just mentioned, we're built, they're building a $20 million, 342,000 square foot warehouse and distribution building that we will lease. So once completed in the spring of 2022, hopefully, the facility will have an estimated 200 to 220 employees. And they will be a mixture of Cummins employees and contract employees. And the facility will have shipping and receiving, warehousing, manufacturing and some office space. So we're really looking forward to working within the Platteville community and expanding our presence in southwestern Wisconsin. And I really want to thank the city of Platteville and the Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation for all of their partnership and really working with us through the details of this project over the last couple of months. So really appreciate your time here tonight and I'm more than happy to take any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Lawrence, for the big reveal and welcome to Platteville. I think we welcomed Patrick last time and, and Skanel, but welcome to Cummins. And I'm just going to do a round robin of council members and ask if anyone has questions or comments for either of you. So Eileen, I guess, start with you.
Thanks. I don't have any questions. Just welcome to Platteville. Very excited about the project.
Thank you very much.
You're very muted again, Barb. I don't know why this happens. At least I'm here. Jason?
Yes, I can hear you now.
It's your turn to ask any questions of Lawrence or make any comments of Lawrence or Patrick.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Kathy?
More of a comment. I served on the Pedic board myself for many, many, many years. So I know how that process works and how thorough they are. I have a true appreciation for all the efforts that Pedic and the city did. And Patrick and Lawrence were absolutely thrilled about your project and we just can't wait. So thank you for coming to Platteville.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I can say, Hila's been a pleasure to work with. She was super helpful and has really helped us through the entire process. So she and Adam, we've been in touch with them for a number of months now. They've been fantastic.
Isaac?
I have no questions for either of them, but I'd say welcome to Platteville and thank you for choosing our city to, to put up your new building and waiting to see all the new jobs coming into town here.
Thank you.
And Ken?
I'll just say, welcome to Platteville. It's to me a positive move.
Okay, great. Okay, folks, we've been around the council members that are present. There are two action items. One is a lot consolidation action for lots 39 to 43 of the industry park. And the second is the sale of city land. Again, those lots 39 to 43, understanding that this would be contingent on a certified survey map and that certified survey map being recorded and the building being built. All right. So do I hear a motion?
I'd make a motion, Barb. I'd make a motion to approve the consolidation of lots number 39 through 43 in the industrial park number seven into one lot contingent upon the contingencies that we put on their certified survey map and the recorded documents. And the second part of that motion would be the sale of the combined one lot to the Skanel Properties LLC.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Kathy to number one, consolidate the lots. And to number two, sell that consolidated lot to Skanel Properties for the construction of a warehouse. And with the, with contingencies relative to certified survey map. So Candace, wherever you are, will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian? Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And again, Lawrence and Patrick, welcome to Platteville. We look forward to the upcoming months and to working with you and to having enough snow off that ground so that you can actually find that there's ground here again.
Yeah, from Skanel's corner, I want to thank you all. I appreciate your support and we look forward to delivering a successful project for Cummins and for Platteville. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, you're, you're both welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to depart if you'd like.
I'm going to go put a two and a half year old to bed, so I'm going to depart. Thank you so much.
That's a good thing to do. Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you all and look forward to meeting you all in person, hopefully sometime soon, once the pandemic and we're not on Zoom anymore.
Well, hopefully we can have a groundbreaking.
I hope, I hope so as well.
Yeah, hopefully, and hopefully we'll do that in person because that would be no fun at all.
Yeah.
On Zoom.
We'll do it, we'll do it in the spring, so.
All right, all right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we're to the information and discussion portion of our agenda. And the first thing on the information and discussion agenda is the sidewalk policy, which was tabled, which I believe in order to discuss it, we have to have a motion and a second and vote to bring it off the table. Is that right, Candace?
Yes.
She is shaking her head, yes.
I move to move the sidewalk policy off of the table.
Okay.
I'll second, Barb.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to put the sidewalk policy back into our discussion items, I guess, untable it, I guess. I don't know if there's such a word as untable. So Candace will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Howard and Joe, I think you're on. Is that right?
Get started. I'll kick in later, I guess.
Sure, just, just to refresh everybody's memory. So this was an effort to take a look at the regulations regarding sidewalks in the city. Came out of some discussions at the Community Safe Routes Committee meeting. As we were looking at it, the potential changes from a staff level, realized that it would be helpful to have a kind of a guiding document that we could use to kind of set the table for what would be the, the community's desire for regulating and the requirements for installing sidewalks as part of development. So with that, as kind of the task, the Community Safe Routes Committee and the Plan Commission worked with staff multiple meetings to come up with a draft policy that was forwarded to the council in the fall. The council did discuss it at several meetings and made some suggested changes. And that document is attached as option two revised. And then kind of towards the end of that, when the council was considering it additionally, I believe, council member Killian had asked the Community Safe Routes Committee to address some of the concerns that they still had regarding. the Community Safe Routes Committee to address some of the concerns that they still had regarding the proposal and suggested that maybe they submit an additional version of that that had basically their wants and needs and desires in that policy. So since that time, they have met, I believe, a couple of times to make some additional recommendations to the policy. And that document that they crafted is also attached as a policy option three. So that's the reason it's on again for information, because you do have a couple of other versions to consider and discuss and hopefully move forward with a document that there's consensus on. So I wasn't involved in the, those additional discussion meetings, so I think Howard can address some of that. And I believe there's a couple of members from the Community Safe Routes Committee present this evening as well.
That's correct. Yes, as Joe mentioned, we had two meetings back in January with the Community Safe Routes Committee. Dr. Fields is here and Danica Larson from the Safe Routes Committee. Jason is a member of that committee as well. And when it's time to discuss those, we can go through the the suggestions and requests in option three.
So I guess I in terms of handling this, everybody's seen option one, option two, and option three, and had adequate time to read that. Adam sent us the Community Safe Routes option last week, one day. And so I guess I'm going to start around by council members and say, do you have questions, concerns? Do you have things that you don't understand? Do you think, have things that you don't support? You have things that you do support? So Eileen? You get a start.
Thanks, Barb. Yeah, I'm looking, I'm gonna call it option two, which is the one that we originally had to discuss two weeks ago or whenever it was, and then the Safe Routes Committee met, and now there's option three. So option two, I'm still comfortable with that as far as proposed comments, changes, suggestions from the Safe Routes Committee. I guess the one that piques my interest is the idea of having perhaps streets that are not quite as wide, where you do have some area for some grassy area, terraced area, I guess they call it, and then the sidewalk, but that would limit you to parking on one side of the street. So I find that an interesting concept. I could see adding that to an option that perhaps a developer could ask for. But otherwise, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with option two. I, I don't think that the other changes are something I would propose at this time.
Okay.
Um, I was, as Howard said, I'm, I'm on the committee, so I'm pretty familiar with the option three and and also we've discussed the other options as well. And just through my discussion and, and just getting more information with the Community Safe Routes Committee, I'm in support of, of option three and, and the additional information and changes that were brought forth by the Safe Routes Committee.
Okay, Kathy?
Couple, couple of questions. In the option three, I don't know what page it's on, but it's item de-installation of sidewalks for development and redevelopment projects. There's something that's changed where it says for all projects, a property owner shall maintain the terrace area free of landscaping or other improvements, including retaining walls. I don't understand the retaining walls. Nobody, I mean, somebody's gonna go put a retaining wall up. I would assume if you, there's a retaining wall, there's a need for it. That, am I misinterpreting? Is it, is it saying that no matter what, you can't have one? Or?
What it's, what it's saying, I'll start, and then maybe Christina can jump in after. The idea here is maintaining that terrace area where a sidewalk would go free of a retaining wall. What we're saying is rather than putting the retaining wall where a sidewalk would be, if you need a retaining wall, put it back so that it wouldn't interfere with placing a sidewalk. There are a, a couple of places here in the city where we have people who have in the past placed retaining walls into the right-of-way retain, in that terrace area where a sidewalk would go. And that just increases any cost to the city to then have to remove that retaining wall and us move it back at city cost versus, you know, having the property owner put in the retaining wall back on their property to begin with.
So Kathy, it appears that what that's saying is you could have a retaining wall. You just can't put it next to the curb, and you can't put it without, what, how big is the terrace area? I don't.
Okay, and, and, and Howard or Joe, personal experience, when on, on my property, I had to have a retaining wall. I had to have a permit for it. And there was guidelines of where it had to be. So that's, I just thought the language sounded odd that it made it sound like somebody might just go put a retaining wall up. Um, and then there was something noted about a map that, a sidewalk map that had population density or, or some traffic. Have we seen that? I'm, I'm not familiar with what that is, where it show, it sounded like it showed where the heaviest foot traffic was in the community.
That's the.
Jason, is that?
Yeah, that's the, the map that has been developed by the Community Safe Routes Committee and one that we try to use to, to kind of base, you know, what, what's going to be important in terms of connectivity and and, and all that. So, so that document is definitely something the, the committee refers to quite often.
Okay, but
Actually, there.
Maybe I missed it, but I ha, I don't recall seeing that. And that might have helped with some of the.
Does not exist yet.
If there's a chance, maybe we could still get it just for information or whatever.
Okay, so just a minute, Kathy. I heard two conflicting things, statements here. Jason says that the Safe Routes Committee refers to this map often. Howard said the map doesn't exist. So help us resolve that before Kathy asks her next question. Howard, Jason, I mean, what map are you referring to? Howard, you said there is no map.
We do not have a map yet. Plan is that over the next few months, the Safe Routes Committee will be working on the map and and a plan to prioritize areas so that we would have high, medium, and low priority, one, two, three, however, however we need to, with a map that can be used, as Jason explained, by the Safe Routes Committee. And so that we can present it to the council and make sure that everybody's on board so that, so that, you know, everybody agrees that, yeah, the, these are our highest priorities or number one priorities. These are our number five priorities or whatever, however, we end up coming up with that.
Okay, so Kathy, right now there is no map. This is a development topic.
Okay.
Okay, you can go to your next question.
Okay, um, I do have a question slash concern about the reduced pavement width of the streets. Is that something that is dictated through engineering process that it's possible to do that? I mean, I, I think of narrowing streets, and then you've got fire trucks, you've got emergency vehicles. And, and, and is this just a suggestion? Or is this what is being proposed that hap, that we adopt this? Make this a rule for all new subdivisions?
I'll let Christina.
Pardon?
I'll let Christina do this one. She was the one that came, came in with this, but yeah, I'll fill in after.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion. I mean, there's a lot of, of of benefits to having a narrower street, and a lot of communities do that. It'll save you money because there's like, there's actually like four lanes of traffic, right, on a local street. You've got two parking lanes and two driving lanes, so it's really wide pavement width. If you reduce that, you don't have to maintain that. First, you don't have to build it. You don't have to plow it. It'll allow you to have extra width on the side of the road that separates the edge of the curb to the sidewalk. So there's more storage in there for snow. That can be a real trick. I mean, one of the reasons people probably don't like having sidewalks is because of snow. And the snow, I mean, I've got this in front of my yard too, right? The plow comes by and plops all the snow back on the freshly shoveled sidewalk because there's not a room for storage. So you can really accomplish a lot by having a narrower street width. And we recognize, it's a, it's just a concept that's something that I would encourage the city to look at. Other communities definitely do it. And I think there's a lot of benefits to it. It also helps reduce runoff. And so there's, there's just a lot of benefits that I think it's something that we should consider, because a lot of our streets don't have, there are places in the city where there's not a lot of on-street parking, and so we could get away with a lure, or reduce street width, and that would open up the opportunity to have sidewalks.
Okay, I can't, I, I, I understand that piece of it, but my, I think my biggest hangup with that is, one, you, you, you're eliminating a property owner's right to be able to park in front of, in the street in front of their house.
It's just a concept.
I, I, I understand, and that's what my main thing was. This is not, it's a, something to consider through the development process. So we're not saying this is part of this. Okay.
It's an idea.
Right. In fact, Kathy, at one point after I read this, I was going to have Howard tell me how wide each of the streets in Platteville currently is. Because I, I don't really, you know, I don't have a big con, I don't have a real good spatial idea of what thirty-two feet is, or twenty-four feet, or twenty-eight feet. And so I was, but Howard, you got spared. I didn't have time to get that email to you, but expect it. Eileen said she was intrigued by that concept of a narrower street. I mean, it is intriguing to talk about that, not in all places, but in some places. So, yeah, so it might not be applicable everywhere. Kathy, any other questions or as you went down through this?
No, I just want to clarify on the, again, I don't have the page number, but where there's a note about the industrial park, says the location and installation of sidewalks for projects that are part of an approved development shall be determined by the approved site plan and/or development agreement. So I see the note that shows Safe Routes is interested in sidewalks and connectivity, but allows for flexibility. So I just want to verify that the industrial park is still not part of this.
What, what the, well, Christina, she's here. Why don't you start?
Yeah, we, we recognize that the industrial park goes through the P, PDAC. I don't, is that the right acronym? Process in order to come up with their proposal. And so we recognize that that's an important, that's important for the industrial park to grow, to do it that way. And so that's why we put that statement in this document that said, you know, we give the PDAC the ability to work on their site plan. And so we were just treating it kind of like a planning unit development, because we wanted to, you know, our, our job is to provide connectivity on the safer outside. And so we wanted to encourage the industrial park to provide connectivity. You've got a trail that goes right there, so why not continue the connectivity? So I didn't want to completely eliminate it from the document because we do feel strongly that the connectivity to the industrial park is important. But yet, we, we recognize the need for flexibility there. So that's why we put it in with similar language to the planning unit development.
So my understanding of that then is that it would be up to the developer and the development agreement and the site plan as to what happens. So.
I'm good. I'm done.
You're good. Isaac?
All right, there's more other questions. I believe the question between Kathy and Eileen are pretty much are the same ones that I've had here, so.
Okay, Ken?
Yes. I looked very carefully at option three. I'm very satisfied with option three. So I would approve option three. There's some changes by writing, and those are helpful as given on option three. So I approve option three. I think it's a good write.
Okay, I have a question. And that is, I want, I need clarification on the whole concept of cul-de-sacs, Howard. I, we have a lot of cul-de-sacs in this town. I can probably name seven of them. In fact, I believe Adam lives on a cul-de-sac. I live on a cul-de-sac. You know, I, I suspect there are lots of other people that live on cul-de-sacs. Actually, you can explain what it means, because it makes no sense to me.
What we're looking at here, trying to get, well, this one says for new subdivisions, not for existing subdivisions first. The other part in this is that our ordinance, I believe, Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it says that we allow up to eight hundred feet for a cul-de-sac. So what we're saying is that if we have a, a cul-de-sac that does not exceed three hundred feet, we're saying, let's only put sidewalks on one side of the street for, for that short of a distance. If it's longer than that, then, then we need to look at both sides of the street, because there will be an ex, there will be a lot more houses on, on that longer cul-de-sac. Is that kind of where we went with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually language that's in the existing ordinance right now.
Joe? What do we have cul-de-sac?
As far as the distance?
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's five hundred feet, but I, I don't recall for sure. A, as far as the sidewalk, I, I don't remember what that provision is. I, I think there's language in there that does provide an exception to shorter cul-de-sacs, but I don't remember the dimension.
I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, some of these cul-de-sacs have like four houses on. Some of them have like three houses on. And it just seems like there should be a opportunity not to have, I mean, it, it seems like that would be. Yeah. So I, I had that question about cul-de-sacs. And then I noticed on pay, on, near the end, on page five, you, there was a, the inclusion of the word large. Pedal, power poles, retaining walls, culverts, large sign. Pedal, power poles, retaining walls, culverts, large signs. Large signage. That's near the end.
I think the issue there is, um, you know, if, if, if someone has. I don't know what you would call large versus small, but I, I think the idea here is. What would be this, what would be the cost? And trouble, if you would, if you will. To relocate. A sign. Outside of. The right of way, outside of where a, a sidewalk would normally go. If we're talking about a, you know, a pedestal mounted sign. You know, that's, you know. Concrete base and, and, and the whole. The whole shoot and match, that would probably be the large sign. If you've got. A. Um, Realtors for sale sign. No, that's not a large sign. That can be easily relocated and, and we would just need to, um. Through, through this exception process, we would need to try to make a determination. Where on that scale is it, you know?
Well, and, and that's what I, my, my, uh. On that said definition, I mean, I think. Large sign because then I can argue that my sign is a large sign and it, since this is in the exception area, seems to me that. I have to, I have to make a case anyway. If it's a large sign or a small sign or any sign at all. So it seems like the, the inclusion of the word large just gives people, um. I'm sorry to say more to argue about. And without definition.
Okay.
I, so folks, what is your, uh? What is your, uh? Desire with this sidewalk policy?
Well, how many people are for option three?
Well, I think I've heard you express interest in option three. I think I've heard Jason express interest in option three. I've heard Eileen express interest in option two. I haven't heard Kathy or Isaac say either one, so I can't say if, if it would be option two or option three.
Well, the Safe Roads Committee has had a chance, uh, to meet on this and I believe they've. Put forth some good suggestions. And changes and I think that's all right for that some great.
So Ken, you're wanting us to put option three on the agenda for action next time?
Yes. As far as I'm concerned.
And Eileen, you're wanting us to put option two on the agenda for action. That would be my preference.
My preference is option two.
Might it be option two out of the, out of either of them?
Well, I guess, uh, we can, uh. Uh, take the, uh, crossouts and the whatever's off all of them and we'll. Put option two and option three forward next time and somebody can make a motion and we can see what happens.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And there is where we are with sidewalks. All right. And thank you to the sidewalk committee. Of course, I, I understand the thing about, uh, um. Narrower streets. Uh, I, and like I said, Howard, it would be interesting for you to, uh. Uh, tell us about particularly new subdivisions where, um. Uh, where we have narrower streets, where we have wider streets. And yes, welcome back, Christina. I was like, I don't know what happened, but.
And Barb, I guess if, if we're gonna ask Howard for that information also, um, Kathy mentioned about whether or not that would be an issue for, uh, the fire department or other.
Right.
Maybe plowing. So maybe give us some information on that as well.
So Ryan, I see Ryan is on. So Ryan, um. Perhaps you can, uh, talk about, uh. Uh, next time you can give us additional information as Howard talks about the width of streets in town, you can talk about, um. Uh, fire department needs in terms of equipment and moving about. So. Okay. Well, I, I believe that takes care of our discussion on sidewalks. So let's move them to inclusivity, diversity and equity update.
Yeah. So, um, just wanted to give some updates and kind of things that are going on in regards to inclusivity, uh, diversity and equity. So. Um, obviously the number one is the, uh, our task force for inclusion, diversity and equity tied. Um, we sent some information out to the members that were appointed, uh, and we have settled on a date for the first meeting. Uh, that's going to be Friday, February twenty-sixth at four PM. Um, so we'll obviously get that information out. Everybody obviously is welcome to, uh, to join that if you would choose. Uh, but otherwise that's going to be kind of the first official meeting to kind of kick off, um, our task force on inclusion, diversity and equity. Um, so there's the update on that. Uh, in regards to kind of the, um, work sessions that we had with the Southwest Rainbow Alliance. Um, staff is working on, uh, working with Southwest Rainbow Alliance on, and they're, they're kind of waiting for a new education. Committee chair to be selected by Southwest Rainbow Alliance. And once that is done, um, we're going to start having some more kind of, uh. You know, specific conversations with departments such as, as the staff note here kind of dictates with our police department. Um, our public works and our parks department, um, as well as also our building maintenance department to kind of look around in regards to areas that potentially, uh, we could make some, some changes or. Or have some process improvements in regards to, um, certain scenarios that would deal with the LGBTQ community. Um, the third one is our bias reporting discussion. So on January twenty-eighth, uh, city staff met with, uh, UW-Plattville staff and with the Plattville School District and held kind of our kickoff. Um, our first kind of bias reporting discussion. And what we're really hoping these meetings will kind of do is allow us an opportunity to, as kind of the three organizations within the city. To kind of learn best practices specifically from the city standpoint, um, the meetings that both Chief McKinley and I have been going to, uh, we're really looking at the ways that these other organizations use. Reporting tools, uh, so that people can report, you know, incidents that they feel are, are biased related towards inclusivity, diversity and equity. So. Um, you know, our next meeting for that is scheduled on February twenty-fifth. Uh, so we're going to be continuing those conversations. And again, it allows us the opportunity when we hear. Um, concerns from community members about either the university or the school district or vice versa, the city. It allows us as kind of leaders to get together and kind of talk about, um, you know, those incidents or issues that we're hearing and, and try to find, uh. You know, some process improvements or further information into what was discussed. Um. The last thing on here, obviously then is, is council president Dawson and I met with Carla Wages and Frank King from UW-Plattville. Uh, to discuss specifically how the city of Plattville could look to and work to partner with either student organizations or specifically the Black Plattville Community Network. On, um, you know, a couple of potential opportunities, looking into how the city, uh, might be able to honor, you know, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. As well as Black History Month. Um, and one of those things that came out of that is, I believe on the email that, uh, council president Dawson just sent to the council members is her and I were. Asked or invited to attend the sixteenth annual Ebony Weekend Conference that's being put on by the Black Student Union at UW-Plattville. Um, and that obviously is open, not just to, uh, students, it's open to everybody. So, uh, we're going to be working with, uh, communication specialist, Richards and I. And we were kind of getting that information out to the public based on the, uh, kind of the invite we received, um, but we would obviously encourage everybody to attend that. And that's kind of the quick update.
Anybody with questions of Adam on, uh, tide? Again, uh, we would, there, it is, uh, there is an option for more people to join. So. You will hear of somebody who said, I never thought that they'd actually appoint anybody or I'm now interested. Please. Let us know. And pardon me. Okay, Adam, COVID.
Yeah. So let's, uh, kind of give you the update on everything going on, uh, with kind of COVID nineteen and municipal updates. So. Um, as of today, February ninth, uh, the past fourteen days, Grant County has averaged ten point four confirmed COVID nineteen cases daily. Um, as of four PM today, there's been a total of four thousand five hundred and ninety-three confirmed COVID nineteen cases. Uh, four thousand four hundred and thirteen, uh, individuals have recovered from being diagnosed with COVID nineteen. Uh, there's six hundred and sixty-two current probable cases of COVID nineteen to date. Um, and unfortunately we have had still are at seventy-nine total deaths of people who have tested positive for COVID nineteen and five total deaths of a person who was a probable case for COVID nineteen. Um, in regards to the University of Plattville's information, uh, we met with them today and, uh, they have a total of seven thousand three hundred and forty-nine, uh, student health services tests. That have been administered since, uh, January twentieth. Uh, they have a total of twenty-seven, uh, student health service tests that have been confirmed positive. One external positive test, I'm sorry, two external positive tests and then two positive tests have been confirmed from employees. So on our call today. Um, they are seeing a little bit of an increase, but again, with the amount of, uh, students that they're doing, they're doing about five hundred and eighty students per day. Um, that number is still relatively, you know, in perspective, i- is kind of in the average of what they're seeing with the Grant County is, uh, you know, it is lower than what it was previously. Um, so again, just a reminder that the UW-Plattville surge testing site, uh, is no longer operational. Uh, so what is going on is the Grant County continues to do. Uh, community testing, which is occurring, uh, Tuesdays in Lancaster and Fridays, uh, here in Plattville at the Armory, uh, through mid-March. And then again, they're going to reevaluate. Um, one of the things they are seeing is obviously a reduction. And this is not just in Plattville. This is pretty much across the board that we've heard is just the reduction in the amount of tests that are occurring. Um, and there's a lot of, you know, varying theories and reasons, uh, as to why that's occurring. So they have changed a little bit of their hours of operation. Um, I believe now it's from eleven, uh, till kind of the end. Uh, but that information we are posting pretty much on our website and also on our Facebook page every time we get that. So some of the information we've received in our emergency management meetings is that total, there has been, uh. As of today, there's been seven hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and twelve vaccines that have been administered in the state of Wisconsin. Uh, nine thousand two hundred of those have been in Grant County alone. Um, so again, the vaccination efforts continue for the phase one B, which is now open to all persons age sixty-five and over, um, as well as firefighters, police and correction officers. Uh, so the majority of our officers have been given the opportunity, um, to either have the first phase or are going to be within this month, going back for their second, uh, immunization. Um, again, local healthcare office officials are urging patients as there's a very large demographic and it will take some time to accomplish this task. Um, I think hats off to Grant County and obviously Southwest Hospital and all of the other areas. Um, they definitely, from one of the calls we've been on, they are, I would say definitely ahead of the curve. Um, and being able to get the majority of, of the population, either, you know, vaccinated or the opportunity to be vaccinated. Um, so one of the things obviously we are hearing now is, um. There is going to be a bit of a, I don't know if I'm going to call it delay or potentially less vaccine available. Um, and a lot of that has to do with trying to make sure that, uh, you know, all of the surrounding counties, areas and hospitals and, and some of the more denser population areas. Um, are able to get the, the vaccine either in the first phase or are kind of ensuring that the second vaccination that needs to occur, um, there definitely is availability. So. What typically, um, on the calls we had, Grant County was indicating, uh, you know, they were asking for anywhere between, you know, two thousand vaccines. Uh, week and they were receiving, you know, anywhere between five hundred and nine hundred. You know, this week they asked for five hundred doses and they only received a hundred. So they do anticipate that that trend will kind of continue here. Um, but then, you know, the, the conversations are starting in March first, uh, they anticipate that there will be kind of more vaccine available. Um, because then there potentially will be a third vaccine, uh, that's on the market kind of by Johnson and Johnson is the third one. Um, otherwise there's Moderna and then Pfizer are the three, you know, would be the three that are kind of available. Um. So again, obviously we continue to have conversations with Grant County and also Southwest Health. In the event that they would need to utilize the Brodsky Center as kind of a vaccination destination. So we continue to talk about that. Uh, again, currently the feedback we receive when we have those conversations is that at this time, uh, both of those entities intend to lose, uh, use locations that they're currently using, either on site, um, or at the fairgrounds. Last week, as everybody knows, was kind of a whirlwind in regards to kind of mass mandates and orders. So, uh, where that currently stands is, um, you know, as we, as the information I sent you guys. Is currently the, uh, assembly and also the Senate, uh, did pass a resolution to essentially. Uh, you know, terminate or remove the emergency, uh, declaration of emergency and the order. That then occurred, the governor to issue a, you know, brand new emergency and executive order, um, you know, requiring mass mandates again. Um, so we continue to have kind of meetings with, you know, the League of Municipalities and obviously Grant County and trying to understand the flow of that. So. Where we currently stand is as of right now, um, you know, we as the municipality have made the decision. Uh, we passed a resolution, you know, the resolution was passed last year, encouraging all businesses and everybody to kind of, you know. Partner with the university and practicing the three Ws. Make sure you're wearing a mask, washing your hands, uh, watching your distance. And then as a municipality, we obviously can control our buildings, which means anybody, as you can see me wearing one. When you're, uh, in, in our buildings or even within our parks and are unable to, you know, keep that social distancing ability, um, we are requiring masks or asking for masks to be worn. Um. As we've talked about or as we discussed, you know, back in October, the, the city did review potentially a mass mandate. Um, I think, you know, what generally was seen by the council and by staff was. You could flip a coin. I think there was fifty, you know, any way you put, people were for it, people were against it. So. Um, that certainly is something that, you know, the council has the ability, that ordinance obviously is there. Um, the League of Municipalities has ruled that yes, as, as local municipalities, you do have that authority. Uh, but as we've talked about, you know, as far as legal challenges, that's kind of the unknown is nobody knows what that would mean or what potentially that would cost if there were to be a local mask ordinance. Um, so again, that's definitely something up to the council that, uh, if you feel that is something that you would like to review, um, what would happen is that was currently tabled. So city staff would just need to know then that the council would like to have that reviewed. We then can either do a special meeting or we can then, you know, subsequently put that on an agenda item. Um. Again, you know, a, as we continue to have multiple meetings as staff with, uh, the police chief, the city, you know, fire chief. Public Works Director and EMS Director, uh, as well as Grant County and kind of continually reviewing everything, uh, that comes up. And we have started to have meetings, uh, with event organizers who obviously, as we've all talked about, you know, one of our themes is. That, uh, you know, I preached to staff and as well as you as the council is restore, is how do we start restoring, you know, some of the practices that we used to do. But obviously do it with the understanding that we are still in a pandemic and COVID nineteen is not going anywhere. So. We obviously as city staff and as council leadership have started to have some meetings with, um, you know, the Chamber of Commerce as well as some other organizations who are looking at. You know, wanting to try to do events, but doing it in a way that, you know, takes into account some of the, the COVID nineteen precautions. Uh, because again, as we continue to be in our meetings and hear everything, um, you know, everybody is to the point where yes, they would like to start doing events. But they understand that, you know, there, there still isn't a, a really good barometer of when, you know, that will occur where it can be back to the fully restoration of what we kind of used to see pre-COVID. So. Those are kind of things that we continue to deal with.
So any questions from anybody, uh, to Adam about COVID, COVID preparation, vaccines, anything? If you have a question or a comment, kind of wave your hand. Council members. Ken?
That's right. Wanted to ask about masks. Um, you make any recommendations as far as masks such as N ninety-five and KN ninety-five?
Yeah, so that's.
Are you staying out of that?
Um, I wouldn't say we're staying out of it. So there's definitely, uh, memos that I send to the employees or I send to the staff, uh, that I pulled from either the CDC or Grant County. Um, that lists kind of what are the best case scenarios? So if you have an N ninety-five mask, that obviously is one of the best options that you can have. Um, but obviously for staff, we have been supplying the ones that I'm wearing and the majority of us ha- have those. Um, they have been proven to, you know, this type of mask has been proven to be effective against COVID nineteen. Um, but yes, we, uh, we do have some of those available for staff. The majority of staff have kind of tended to be wearing these. Um, but those individuals that have requested or have asked if they could have an N ninety-five mask, we've been working obviously with Chief Simmons, um, and there, you know, we've been giving them, if they've requested, we try to find a form and give it to them.
Okay, where can those be purchased?
Um, if you want to purchase those, pretty much you can get them.
Farm and free. I used to buy N ninety-five at Farm and Free.
Yeah, I mean, they definitely may have them there. I know for one, um, surprisingly Sherman Williams is another one that has N ninety-five specific mask for painting. Yeah, I mean, they definitely may have them there. I know for one, um, surprisingly, Sherman Williams is another one that has N ninety-five specific masks for painting. Um, so there is, I'm trying to think specifically, if you go on to any of the, you know, CDC um, or DHS websites, you know, Department of Health Services, they tend to have kind of that information of where they would recommend. Um, I don't know, Chief Simmons might be able to tell you, you know, more specifically if there's a, a different provider that I can't think of.
Ryan?
There's a lot of them that just have anymore. Your uh, pharmacies have a lot of that stuff anymore. Online, um, but Farm Free, uh, you'll probably uh, looking for this, the regular uh, N ninety-fives. Um, a lot of them are associated with places for construction as well, too. Uh, for what you'd find in the market, you will not find healthcare ones um, available out there uh, because they're pretty much restricted to healthcare. But, um, so Menards, um, Sherwin-Williams and so forth, you'd be able to find your um, regular N ninety-fives made for particles for construction.
Okay, any other COVID related questions or comments? Okay, um, Jesse, Jesse Lee Jones. Did I hear the library, did I hear the library is reopening?
That's right, we were open to the public um, today for the first time, and we were surprisingly busy, so it was nice to see everyone again. Um, our hours to the public are two to, two to six P M. Tuesday through Friday and nine A M. to noon on Saturdays.
Great, and Eric. I was a part of your uh, audience on Sunday night for the first lyceum program. Congratulations, and we'll move on to the second lyceum program on February twenty-first. Not Valentine's Day, right?
That's correct. We'll skip a week for Valentine's Day. And then uh, we'll have uh, a panel including Dr. Eugene Tezdel and Cleaborne Benson, the president of the Wisconsin Black Historical Society and Museum. Uh, presenting on uh, black history, and so it should be a fascinating topic.
Okay. Great, well, I thought I better give a shout out to you guys because uh, you have programming going on, and Eric, I would uh, note to, to the, anybody who's listening or whatever, that the uh lyceums are not in person, uh, they are available, this one was a webinar, not as so I guess they're somehow webinars.
Yeah, we upgraded our Zoom uh, account to uh, be a webinar, which is uh, it's turned out to be much more sophisticated. It's a, a really nice experience for the viewer. It's not the same as being in a Zoom meeting. Um, and uh, and it's a real uh, cinch to use, so folks can uh, purchase their tickets online, W W W dot mining, uh, Jamison dot museum, twenty bucks for all seven lectures, otherwise four dollars each. Thank you.
Okay. Well, guys, I think that's enough, uh, enough uh, announcements, enough uh commercials, I guess we could call it, and uh, we do have closed session, so I would take a motion to uh, adjourn this meeting to a closed session for Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public prop- properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is about an economic development potential. So I guess we would take a, a motion to adjourn to closed session and from that closed session to adjourn, there won't be any action item during the closed session. So adjourn to closed session and adjourn.
So I will make that Martian motion, Barb.
Okay, I heard a so move and I heard a second. So I'm not sure where they, I know Eileen, and I don't know who else. Was that you, Isaac, or was it Jason? It was Isaac.
I did this.
Okay.
Yeah, that was me.
So Eileen and Isaac motion in a second, you can put them however you want them, Candace, and we'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Stanley? Isaac? Frozen. Yeah, he's frozen. We'll just assume he said yes. That means we leave this meeting and you have another login for the other one, so uh, we'll see you soon.